Okay. Good evening. Welcome. It's December 10th, 2024. Just a few moments after 7:20. We are opening a public hearing in support of the Restore New York grant funding application for foothills builder to construct a mixed-use residential building at 109-115 Warren Street in Glens Falls. Just remind the council that on November 26th, we approved the writing of the budget for to write this grant. And so this is just a public hearing needs to happen so that we can go ahead and it's a resolution later tonight to approve the grant application. Anybody would like to come to the council and talk about this mixed-use residential project? You're welcome to come forward and let us know your name and your address. We'll just wait a few moments for the public hearing to pass and then we will start the public hearing on our amended proposed amendment to our Chapter 22 zoning regarding short-term rentals. Well, we're waiting as the council seen the article in the Albany Business Review or the article I believe I sent you in that email regarding a National Business Review magazine. I'll send you a pass on, I'll give you one for everyone down there. If you don't wish it, just please hand it back to me and I'll give it out to the people. I believe I emailed you all the copies so that you'd have it. Please don't. This is going to be put out in the magazine, I believe, later this month. And so this was just an editable copy I wanted to share with you. And then recently, I believe you also have this too, but our Albany Business Review article featuring Glens Falls on the front page and I'll share that with you as well. And again, if you've already got it and you don't wish it, I'll take it back and give it to others. Thank you. And it's now 7:26, so we will close the public hearing on the Restore New York grant application for foothills builder to construct a mixed-use residential building at 109-115 Warren Street. And we'll open a public hearing. It is now 7:25, actually 7:26, to amend the Chapter zoning 220 zone to add terms and provisions relating to our short-term rental. And I believe Councilwoman Palmer has some information she'd like to share with us.
Sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I just wanted everyone to kind of know about the process we went through while we were working on this regulation. We've been sharing this publicly and it's been on our website, but I know not everyone has seen it. So initially, when we decided that we wanted to look at short-term rentals and what to do about them in Glens Falls, our first instinct was we need to hear from the public. So we put out a survey and we sent a press release. We had some coverage on in the Post-Star and the Chronicle and WAMC. And we put it out on all of our social media posts, so we tried to solicit public input. We got responses to our survey, which I'll share with you in a minute. And we also held a public forum at Randall Public Library to continue getting public input. After we did all of that work, we then, we also reached out to Warren County to get data. So we got data from the treasurer's office and also from Warren County Planning that helped us see exactly where the short-term rentals are in our community. And we looked at all of the other regulations that are present in Warren County. So I want to just quickly take you through this. Hopefully, I can do this from here. Let's see. So if I click on this, or maybe you have it loaded here. Okay, so these are the survey results. So I don't know if everyone can see this, but if you look here, we asked people, you know, how long have you lived in Glens Falls? There we go. It's not really hitting me.
Focus in.
Maybe. Can you hand me the keyboard? Okay. Here we ask people, we ask how long they've lived here. Do you rent? Do you own? What's your age group? So we had a pretty diverse group of respondents to the survey. And then we asked them, maybe it'll work better if I use the keyboard. Let's see. Okay. We asked them if they worked here, if they lived here. The majority of respondents were people who lived in Glens Falls. And then we asked them if they had ever stayed in a short-term rental, if they were aware of short-term rentals in their neighborhood, and if they actually had ever owned or operated a short-term rental. And we did have 16 people who said that they were short-term rental operators at one point who responded to this. So we asked them, how do you feel about the presence of short-term rentals in your neighborhood? And if you can see here, the purple represented on that circle is for very negative. The red is for somewhat negative, and it goes down from there. We asked them a series of questions about how they impact the neighborhood, and they responded to those with open-ended responses, which I'll share in a minute. And then we asked them, what kind of regulations do you think we should, do you think that short-term rentals should be regulated in Glens Falls? The blue represents yes. And then the orange is no. And then if you go down here, we asked them, what type of regulations would you like to see? And can you see that from here? It's so hard to see. Can you see it? We asked them about, should there be permits? Should they be limited to certain areas? And almost, almost everyone who filled the survey out felt strongly that there should be regulations, but they didn't want to see them in their residential neighborhoods. Do you think short-term rental operators should contribute to neighborhood maintenance or community improvement funds? The blue represents yes. So those were our, oh, thank you. Those were, do you have the other ones?
Yes.
Oh, I can help you all. All right. The, let's see here. Now, these are the open-ended question, survey questions that we asked. And I'll just read a few of them. So the first comment says, don't make it too easy or too desirable. We need more affordable and low-income rentals, not short-term new services. Another one says, they should be regulated and keep fees or taxes and contribute to the local economy. Do not allow them in residential neighborhoods. We pay high taxes to live in the nice neighborhoods near the schools, and there's a lot of riffraff and reckless driving and uncut properties when rental properties are allowed. If they can't be found, banned outright, rental agreements should be a minimum of six months or month to month. And it goes on and on, but the majority of the comments were about affecting the housing stock that we have available, driving up the cost of buying houses and renting for long-term renters, and affecting neighborhood cohesion. There were about four or five respondents who said, you don't need to do anything. But that was it. Out of, out of all of the responses we got, 165 from this survey, but then we had a public forum and we've been taking comments. So I also wanted to show you, let's see. This is a spreadsheet of all the other municipalities in Warren County. And you can see that Glens Falls is one of the last municipalities to actually have regulations in place. Everyone else almost does. So this is not abnormal that we're looking at this. This is, this shows you where the short-term rentals are by zone. So you can see here that in our R1, which is single-family neighborhoods, that's where the most of our short-term rentals are. And that's really kind of the opposite trend that we think the people in the community, based on their input to us, want to see. The second largest area is in the R2 zone, and then it goes down to general, commercial, cultural, professional, and central commercial district. So we, we got all this input from the treasurer's office about where the short-term rentals are. We worked with Warren County Planning to look at them by zone and to get best practices from other communities. And we took all of the feedback we got from the public, and that's how we got here. So the regulations that we're proposing are to no longer allow short-term rentals in R1 and R2 zones that are unhoseded. So if you want to have a property purely for the purposes of having a business of, you know, running, renting it out as short-term rentals in the residential neighborhoods, you will no longer be able to start that business. If you live in a property and you want to rent out a room to make some extra money, you can do that. So we distinguished between hosted and unhoseded. And we also gave a five-year period to phase it out. So for people who are already operating, we said, you have five years to phase this out and know that you will not be able to do it after that. So that, that's what you see here today. We have received a couple other letters since we started this. One from a realtor group that thanked us for starting with public input, but really wanted us to think about people who may leave seasonally and rent their properties out and think about ways we could potentially allow them to do that. And then we received another letter just today, I believe, talking about the impact on the economy and the tourism and people's, people's ability to afford their homes and things like that. So that's where we are now. I'm really interested to see if anyone else has comments about this. Our plan is to leave this public hearing open to consider everybody's comments. The Building and Codes Committee will be meeting again before the next council meeting, and we'll see at that time if there are adjustments that need to be made. But we'd like to hear if anyone else has any comments on this. The primary concern from the residents and also from the council was to, to understand the fact that we have limited housing already. Warren County Housing Needs Study showed that we do not have enough housing for the people who want to live here already. So we don't want to take housing stock and long-term rentals off the market for people who may want to live in our community full-time. Yep. Does anyone have?
So does anybody for public comment regarding short-term rentals have anything to address the council? So we'd like you to step forward and tell us your name and address.
How are you? I'm Andrew Kopp. I live at 185 Bay Street in Ward 3. I am the owner of Kopp Property Management. We operate on 40 Lawrence Street in Ward 1, I think. I always confuse them. So I want to start by saying I think that we got some things right. When I say we, I'm really involved, but this group got some things right, I think, in this legislation or this zoning pass. I'm happy to see that you chose to tie these rules to zoning rather than a blanket municipality ruling. I think that the other municipalities that have taken steps like this have missed the mark. I don't think there's anyone in this room that would argue that if you want to have an Airbnb that does whatever it wants on top of the bullpen, that that should be permissible. And I think that if you want to put an Airbnb on Windy Hill or Windy Bridge, wherever those R1 developments are, that might be an issue. I have some concerns with the other zonings, the middle of this group. I think that to outright ban them in R2, especially given the current amount of the city that is zoned as R2, is heavy-handed. To treat it the same as R1 is going to be tough and it's going to impact a lot of people. Also, if you look at the map, there are some locations where R2 zonings are very likely to be changed in the near future. I also would argue that it is probably too light in the RM district to have limited restrictions in the RM district, I think is counter to the goal of increasing housing. I don't think it should be banned in RM, but I don't think it should be open season like it is currently in the way it's written. I also am concerned that while yes, a survey went out and some questions were asked months ago, I actually think I responded to that survey. The questions are, it's easy to get an answer. You ask, hey, do you want a short-term rental next to your house? No, I don't. Right? Do you think short-term rentals should be restricted or mandated or regulated by the government in some way? Yeah, of course. I think most people will answer that. I think they'll also answer that if you ask them, do you want a quad next to your house? Do you want a five unit next to your house? And I hope we do better, we do the comprehensive plan, than to ask questions like this and base theories on, you know, people don't want short-term renters, they don't want long-term renters next to their house. So I think it's important to use more than just these surveys to make these opinions. I'm also concerned that while this, the survey went out and notified people, I can tell you that this was news to many of the realtors. A few of the letters you got were because I reached out to people. I reached out to the Chamber of Commerce. Trish Rogers did not know this was happening. I reached out to the CEO of SAR. Mr. Miller did not know this was happening. I am concerned that if we push it through tonight or even in two weeks, there are going to be, you know, short-term landlords that have no idea this happened. They're not going to have an opportunity to come and speak like I am tonight. They're not going to have an opportunity to prepare for. The one thing we didn't talk about is the day this passes or whenever the state approves it, we're not going to be able to register new Airbnbs, new short-term rentals, which can be very problematic for folks that are in the middle of multi-month construction projects and have no idea that this is going to happen. They've invested tens of thousands of dollars in our city, and they're not going to be able to register them quick enough and do something that I feel like they should be able to do. They invested money in our city, they should be able to reap the reward of it. So I think we need more time for this to populate through the Chronicle, the Post-Star. Different stakeholders need an opportunity to be able to come and speak and give their opinion on the matter. And then my biggest reservation with this is all of these zonings are fine. It's fine to look at them as they are today, but we are in the middle of a comprehensive plan overhaul. So no one in good faith can sit here and tell me that they know how much of the city is going to be in RM district in two years. No one knows. You have no idea who you're voting. So what today is R2, R1, tomorrow would be RM. So you might be stoked, or some, someone living on First Street might be very happy to hear, hey, we're going to ban, you know, short-term rentals in R1 district today. And in three years, we find out, oh, well, actually, you're on RM now. They can do whatever they want. So I think it is premature to start making these decisions about what we're going to do with zoning in light of a comprehensive plan coming. I mean, I have no idea how many months it will take, but I assume it is relatively soon. So my opinion is that to vote on things like this now, make decisions like this now, when the very nature of our city is about to change and not in conjunction with it, is a mistake and it's one that we will pay for. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would, I would like to say that we, we did make a lot of effort to put this out there. If people didn't know about it, I'm sorry about that, but we sent multiple press releases. I announced it at council meetings for the last maybe six months. It was, like I said, on NPR, it was in our local news media, it was on the city website. We put it on the city's Facebook page. We, we tried really hard to solicit feedback from everybody, and I specifically said in my comments, I want to hear from realtors, I want to hear from people who own short-term rentals. So we really, really did want to get public input. And, and we still do. That's why we're here tonight, and we're not planning to vote on it tonight. We're planning to take your input and, and keep considering it.
Does anybody else from the public like to address short-term rentals? Sure. Thank you. I have a number, and I base this on what is registered with Warren County. I have a number of short-term rentals that are in the second ward, and the majority of the second ward, the northern end of it is R1, with some R2, and we also cover the downtown area. A couple of things that were told to me by those individuals that I talked to, I did not have an opportunity to talk to anybody but one hosted short-term rental in my district. I'm wondering why we're charging more for a hosted, for a permit for a hosted location and less for a unhoseded location, because it would seem to me that the, that's what's in there, if I read that correctly.
That's not what, maybe that was a mistake. That's not what, the recommendations for the pricing came from reviewing what other municipalities doing from our Building and Codes Department head. And he said that the unhoseded would be more work and that would cost more.
Right. But if, so I may be wrong in this, then the numbers are flipped.
Oh.
The numbers are flipped, and that's okay. So they're wrong and they will be changed.
Yeah, the hosted are, are easier.
They're a lot easier. They're being charged in there, and that's why I was asking. Okay, thank you very much. The other, second issue, and I talked to neighbors of some of these short-term rentals, was the existing non-conforming. In the fact that we want to give those individuals that are existing short-term rentals now, who will not be conforming to the new code, five years to rectify that. So my personal opinion is, you know, I thought we were doing this because we were trying to prove the quality of life in those, those neighborhoods. And yet, the way this is set up right now, those people whose quality of life is questionable at the moment won't be rectified for five years.
So the reason for that, I was the one who was outspoken on that one, is that if I came in and invested in something, I would want to have some time to look back at what I put in. And we're talking about, I think, what was it, 17 properties in R1? And I don't know how many of them might be hosted. So I thought it's not an overwhelming number of properties, because any of the ones that aren't currently, I know in my ward, I have short-term rentals that aren't on the list. So those would not be given the five-year, it would just be the ones that are registered. And that five years gives somebody a chance, who's made a significant investment into a property that's completely legal right now, to get some of their money back before they need to slip a problem.
So the, I guess, as Councilwoman Lappin said, right now, it's already the law that in Warren County, if you're operating a short-term rental, you have to register and pay occupancy tax to the county. If you're currently illegally operating a short-term rental and not registered, then you will not be given five years because you're, you're not operating according to the law. If you are, we did take your feedback, because I had, I had asked everybody, please send me any feedback you've had from your constituents. And I did bring your constituents' feedback to the committee. And we did consider, should we shorten the time period from five years to a less amount of time? Mr. Kopp, Kopp was at that meeting, and he was strongly adamant that that wasn't, that he didn't think five years was enough time. And we kind of thought, okay, we're, we're trying to do something that's fair, and if people have invested money, maybe five years is enough time for them to feel they've gotten their investment back, but.
My only disagreement, my only disagreement with that is, is I'd like somebody to explain to me what a sizable investment property is, other than maybe furniture.
Purchasing?
Well, purchasing it, they would probably be better off in this market to turn it quickly. While the market is, is still there, that they can recoup most of, not all of the money.
Some loans don't allow you to flip them that quickly.
Yeah. I mean, I don't disagree that, that five years is a long time. We were trying to balance the, the comments we received from different stakeholders. But this also brings up another point that, you know, someone mentioned that we should wait for the comprehensive plan, which initially was kind of my thinking, because we're about to go through this process. But the problem is, the longer we wait, the more people start short-term rentals and the more pre-existing we will have. And there are people who call and they say, what are the rules for short-term rentals? And we currently don't have them. So we felt we needed to get something established. That's why this is not very cumbersome and full of a bunch of regulations. It's pretty straightforward. And if we need to adjust it through the comprehensive planning process, we will, we'll amend it.
So I mean, that's, that's the comments that I got, and I think that five years is too long a period of time. The only other thing is, is there was a section in this in regards to parking. And they talked about in residential zone, the location would have to have two parking spots. Then it also says that an additional parking spot would be needed for every four renters. So you have to have the two, and then the first four people, it requires another one?
I think we mirrored, we, we got the, the basic regulations from Warren County based on best practices that have been established in other communities. And then we mirrored, we adjusted the parking to mirror what we currently, what our code currently requires. So that's why it mirrors our code.
My question is this, so I rented Airbnb for a short-term rental in the second ward in residential zone. In order to get that permit, I have to have two parking spots. So how many people can rent that and only have, require the two parking spots? Eight? The way I read it, it says you have to have two, and then it says an additional spot would be needed for each additional four renters. What does that mean?
Karen, do you, do you want to, I'm trying to pull it up here.
It's section 220-37.
I just want to read exactly what you're referencing before.
It's motor vehicles, right? 220-37.
I'll read it to you right here, and it, it do show this 220-37. It says parking, a minimum of two parking spaces is required, except for short-term rentals located in the central commercial district, plus one additional space for every four allotted renters.
Right. So when six people are renting, they need three parking spaces.
Right. So the two parking spaces that are required cover the four people, but if there's two more, you need another.
Correct.
Okay. I just want a clarification.
Yep.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you.
And also, Councilman Cricketh, if they sell, it reverts back to, they can't keep that for short-term.
Yeah.
Even if they, you know, are trying to recoup their investment, they can't, the next person buying it can't turn it back into an Airbnb.
Yeah. So, yeah, it doesn't stay with the property. That, that would no longer be a short-term rental.
So Councilwoman Palmer, I think you want to leave that public comment period, this public comment period open?
Yeah, I want to leave it open because I'd like to, we got, we'd already heard from Mr. Kopp, so we had his, his feedback from when he attended previous committee meetings. But we got two additional letters, sounds like it's from your outreach, to stakeholder groups. But I'd like the committee to have time to look at those and consider that. The main consideration is just four people who seasonally leave. Do we want to consider any provision to allow them to, for a limited amount of time, rent that property out or not? That seems to be the, the primary place where there could be some room for compromise. So I'd like us to consider that. And, and if anybody watching this or who reads about this later has additional feedback, please send it to us, because again, that was our goal from the beginning. You can look at what regulations are in other communities, but we wanted to make regulations that made sense for Glens Falls, based on the people who, who live here and what their input was. As I said, overwhelmingly, the people who reached out to us didn't want to see these in, in the residential neighborhoods.
So Mary, I take it will be table number three that?
Yeah.
We'll leave the public hearing open.
Right.
Okay. And I'd also like my comment about the existing non-conforming five years being too long.
Yeah, we can, we can talk about that. Yeah, we can talk about that again, too.
Thank you. With that, we'll leave this public comment period open. We'll open the regular session Tuesday, December tenth, two thousand twenty-four, common council chambers. Begin this with Councilman Landry leading us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, peaceful, free, and fair.
Now we open our common council meeting to public comments. I'll ask anybody who'd like to make a public comment to the council, to come and address the council, please tell us your name and address.
Hi. Hi. As you know, I'm Heather Glenn Hall, resident of Queensbury and wife of City of Glens Falls Lieutenant Firefighter Doug Hall. I spoke to you briefly just two weeks ago, and today I wanted to also share with you a little bit of what I've learned in the past year. I have learned that the disease my husband was diagnosed with, Alzheimer's, is a very sneaky disease. It masquerades itself well in a person that is sleep deprived and under continued stress. You don't for one minute think that the love of your life, your hero, and the person that you spend planned retirement with is suffering from this horrible disease, not when he is only fifty-five. You just brush it away and say, he needs a break, he needs some sleep. And then you must admit that something is very wrong. There are doctor visits and months of specialist shuffle, appointments near and far, doctors apologizing, devastation and tears. All of your plans fade to nothingness, and you are sent home to figure things out on your own. I'm an art teacher, but this year I became a biologist. I read as many books and medical journals as I could on the topic of Alzheimer's and its causes. In my research, I learned that Alzheimer's is caused by plaques in the brain. A protein called amyloid beta builds up and blocks neural pathways. These proteins are the body's protective measure to prevent toxins from further reaching the brain. But these proteins also shut down the neural pathways that govern so many of the tasks we perform in our daily lives. This is not a disease that has a single causation, and discovering its cause is different in each individual, although the end result is the same. Those who suffer from this condition have multiple contributing factors. To discover how to halt the formation of plaques in Doug's brain, I had to seek numerous doctors who would be willing to run tests to help me find the triggers. To date, Doug has undergone thirty-one chelation treatments. These treatments helped to remove heavy metals from the body, which were discovered after an initial test. Doug has high levels of lead, aluminum, mercury, antimony, cadmium, nickel, thallium, and even uranium in his system. How did they get there? The nineteen seventy-five New York Bell Telephone Exchange fire tells us all about the exposures firefighters have to harmful substances, but to date, only cancer is acknowledged as a result of these exposures. To this day, firefighters in New York City are compensated with seventy-five percent of pension rather than the standard fifty percent when they are diagnosed with cancer, as there is a direct correlation between their ongoing exposure and cancer risk. Doug also has high inflammatory markers, was borderline diabetic, and suffered from severe sleep deprivation. All these things lead to Alzheimer's disease. The chronic inflammation and insulin resistance are side effects of exposures to PFOS, the chemical found in firefighting foam. A single, simple Google search on the effect of PFOS exposure yields the following information: inflammation in multiple organs, a situation which threatens the body unable to eliminate toxins effectively; oxidative stress, which leads to cell damage and even cell death; and altered protein levels, which tells us that PFOS exposure could absolutely contribute to the buildup of amyloid beta proteins found in the brains of Alzheimer's patients. PFOS bind to receptors in the body which regulate inflammation, lipid and glucose metabolism, and adipocyte differentiation. Simply put, exposure to firefighting foam puts firefighters at a great risk of getting Alzheimer's disease. This exposure alone provides a multifactor damage which leads to this disease. As a firefighter and trainer, Doug and the other firefighters in this room will tell you that there have been instances when they have been literally swimming in this dangerous substance. I am doing everything in my power to save my husband. I had expected our retirement years to be spent skiing with our future grandchildren. Who knew that such a passion for his job would bring Doug to this extremely unfortunate situation? I am only fifty-three and not even old enough to retire and have time with him. I am required to organize my days to make sure that he is getting the things he needs. He can no longer drive, so I often have to arrange for rides to appointments when I cannot miss work. There are mountains of supplements, changes in his diet to keep his glucose levels in check. And then there is the worry, sleepless nights, wondering how I am going to do all of this, and will I have time to still make memories with him? I am not only here today to tell you about this disease, but to offer my sincerest thanks to the firefighters of the City of Glens Falls, who have stood by us and fought for us this last year. They are to be commended for standing by their brother and me. More than once, they have told me that they are only a phone call away, no matter what time of day. The community of Glens Falls needs to know that these men and women who will come to their rescue in situations where most of us would run away, their hard work and dedication should be acknowledged, and I encourage you as city council members to ask them what it is like to spend your day in the life of a firefighter.
Thank you.
My grandmother died, so I'm also. Do the name and address. Oh, yeah. Address is thirty-eight A Rogers Street here in Glens Falls. And the name is Jason Warren. W A is in Andrew, R is in Robert, N is in Norman, E is in Edward. I was here two weeks ago, said some words, some good stuff, some accolades for Glens Falls, the city officer Schwartz and officer Warrenton, and things are doing really, really well. Things have been looking better. Like this fuck coffee window. And until today, I was heading from the barber shop to the library, and there were six, six days of vendor vagrants, smoking extensively, pretty close to the library. I was in a hurry, and when, a lot of them, when they see this, they're like, oh boy, because this has happened before. So I'm walking by, and I'm in a hurry, and I go, you guys know, no smoking, the sign's right there. I go, I go, I was told to call the non-emergency number, I'm not going to cause a problem, just go smoke somewhere else. The guy goes, make me. I'm like, I'm too busy. I'm too busy to do this. So I am going to make it. Living well is the best prevention, right? So when I went to the library, go to the computer, and I'm forty-nine years old, you know, I spelled my name for the camera, so that's the Facebook. And I go on X, Twitter, or whatever the heck it's called, and I put in a Twitter handle, JW three three eight seven, three three eight seven. And I talk about the issues, the vagrant issues, the Warrensburg sports issues. That was my first post ever. This means very much to me, the Warrensburg sports issue, what happened. That was a tragedy. And now, since this vagrant told me to make him get off the property, I am going to make him get off the property. I am going to throw my hat in the ring, and I am going to run for a least of onyx seat, NY twenty-one of the House of Representatives, Congress. It's all here. I've done extensive discussions with the GOP, Tim. I reinstated my corporation, I'm a corporate CEO again. I haven't done that in twenty years. Mike Thompson knows. So I'm just putting all the wheels together and little bit, this is, it's quite extensive. It's a challenge, like Tim said, just little by little. I've done this kind of stuff before in different ways, so it's, it's voluminous to the point of encyclopedic, to the point of being iliacic by Homer Simpson. So I guess I'll see you guys in two weeks with progress.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to address the council? I've seen anybody coming forward. Go to a committee report, it's Councilman Clark.
No report.
Councilman Donahue.
Sustainability of the twelve sixteen twenty twenty-four, I think after that I have a statement what's going on, I remember, that we just see right now.
Great. Thank you, sir. Councilman Landry.
Thank you, Mayor. Personnel Labor Committee continues its negotiations with the city's CSEA union, and our next scheduled negotiation meeting is December seventeenth at two thirty PM.
Thank you. Councilman Palmera.
The Building and Codes Committee will meet on twelve seventeen at five thirty for the purposes I described earlier. Recreation, I just wanted to update everyone that the bid for the East Field Field House was, is out and should be closing, I think, today or tomorrow. We're hoping to have a resolution for you for the next council meeting to award that contract so that we can redo the field house and the bathrooms at East Field.
Thank you. Councilman Landry.
The Technology Committee met on December fourth. We discussed some of the cameras and other infrastructure coming from Story Tech, which I believe are on the docket today. We also discussed incident response and mock disaster response and hip top exercise. I think Chip is going to get that on the, like, discussion plan for department heads come, you know, in the coming months. We also talked about training for Microsoft Office Suite products and having that for department heads as well, as well as council members. And in addition, we, Chip was saying that we would have some CCL fix updates shortly. And we had a pretty extensive conversation about AI implementation. Councilwoman Palmer brought some, some things to, to us in terms of what some other municipalities are doing with AI, specifically Saratoga was doing something, and I will share that with council members and with meeting minutes for anybody who wants to get minutes, too, just reach out to me and I'll put you on the list. And I still need to follow up with cable franchise agreement, so that's where we're at.
Thank you, sir. Under voice vote, we have two resolutions. Resolution one is we approve the minutes of the November twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting of the Glens Falls Common Council. And two is a resolution to approve the clerk's monthly and PVV report. Do we have a motion for voice vote?
It's a move.
Second. On favor? Any opposed? Thank you, the motion carries. Three, I believe, is under roll call vote, I think we have a motion to pull number three, and not for discussion, but we're going to table it until after two more weeks of public comment. For, excuse me, are there any other items under, excuse me, roll call vote, the council would like to pull? Not hearing any. We have four is a resolution to approve the lease agreement extension between the City of Glens Falls and the Adronic Civic Center Coalition in the form approved by the attorney for the mayor to execute. Five is a resolution to approve the contract for to pay to allow for Recreation Department to accept online payment for services rendered by the city in commission of its duties. Six is a request to amend the City of Glens Falls Common Council Resolution four, six, five, dated eleven twenty-six twenty-four to increase A zero zero nine 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 dash four oh eight nine ARPA by one hundred and eleven, excuse me, one, one hundred thousand, one hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred, excuse, and fifty-seven, wow, one thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-seven cents, and increase A one one six eight five two zero three two zero computer equipment for security cameras as it was decided to increase the AIS license period, and an older quote was used when the original resolution was requested. Seven is a resolution to decrease A one one nine nine zero dash nine thousand contingency by one thousand two hundred, and increase A one one four three zero four four seven nine personnel other contracted by one thousand two hundred to pay for Indeed Employee Locator Services. Eight is a resolution to decrease expense account A four five five, excuse me, A four five four one zero four three six four cement, cement services by one thousand, one hundred, one thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars, and increase expense line A two three three one zero four three seven four electrical, electrical supplies by one thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars for electrical supplies for Coles Woods. Nine is a resolution to decrease expense account A seven eight one seven zero one thousand, street cleaning personal services by twenty-five thousand, increase expense account A seven eight one seven zero dash four four seven nine other contracted services by twenty-five thousand dollars to pay for dumping fees incurred by fall debris during open pickup. Ten is a resolution to increase revenue account A zero zero nine 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 dash eight, or excuse me, four oh eight nine ARPA by one hundred and fifty-seven eight hundred and ninety-three dollars, and increase expense account A one one four nine zero two two zero zero DPW equipment by one hundred and fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars to purchase a new garbage truck for DPW. Eleven is a resolution to increase revenue account A zero zero nine 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 dash four oh eight nine ARPA by two hundred and sixty-two thousand and seventeen dollars, and increase expense account A seven eight one seven zero twenty-three hundred, street cleaning other equipment by two hundred and sixty-two thousand seventeen dollars to purchase a new sweeper for DPW. Twelve is a resolution to increase revenue account A zero zero nine 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 dash four oh eight nine ARPA by eight thousand dollars, and increase expense account A one one six two zero dash four four seven eight, City Hall other contracted services by eight thousand dollars to furnish and install a second smaller awning at the overlapping place at City Hall. Thirteen is a resolution to increase revenue account line A zero zero nine 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 dash four oh eight nine ARPA by three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, and increase expense account A one one three two five dash twenty-two hundred controller equipment by three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for a new Conica copier and the controllers office. Fourteen is a resolution authorizing the City of Glens Falls to apply for and receive funding under the Restore New York Communities Initiative Round Nine Grant Program to facilitate the mixed-use redevelopment of two contiguous dilapidated properties on Warren Street and Ward One, and to close the center of downtown Glens Falls, and close to the center of downtown Glens Falls. Fifteen is a resolution approving the health insurance options for twenty twenty-five. Active employees and retirees not Medicare eligible will be offered Highmark Northeast New York and Anthem Dental Plan once again this year. Retirees that are Medicaid eligible will be Medicare eligible and will be changing from Aetna to Exelis C, BCBSS effective February first, two thousand twenty-five. Sixteen is a resolution to decrease A one one nine nine zero dash nine thousand contingency by one thousand dollars, and increase A one one two one zero dash four four seven nine other contracted to pay Cannon Hall copier and meeting video costs. Seventeen is a resolution to increase A zero zero nine 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 dash four oh eight nine ARPA by two thousand, two hundred and ninety-five, excuse me, two thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, and increase eight four five eight nine one dash four four seven nine other contracted services by two thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars to pay for sparrow to pay for sparerates for the parking system at the Park Street Garage. Eighteen is a resolution to hereby approve the reappointment of Mary Page thirty-eight Parkview Lane, Glen's Falls, New York, to the Board of Assessment Review for the term of ten one twenty-four through ten, nine thirty, two thousand twenty-nine. Nineteen is a resolution to approve the Controller's Office collections of water and sewer rents on the attached schedules by adding them to the city's tax roll and collecting them in the same manner as real property taxes. Twenty is a resolution to increase A one one nine nine zero dash nine thousand contingency by five hundred dollars. An increase A one one nine 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 eight eight dash four 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 three legal advertising by five hundred dollars. This budget line being underfunded by two thousand twenty-four as the post art began charging twenty dollar per ad publishing fee in two thousand twenty-four that was unforeseen and helping complete the legal advertising budget quicker than during previous years. Twenty-one is a resolution to increase revenue code A zero zero nine 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 dash four zero eight nine ARPA by a hundred and fifty thousand and transfer this amount into the Glen's Falls Local Development Corporation to provide small business development support. Twenty-two is a resolution to increase revenue account A zero zero nine 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 dash four zero eight nine ARPA by three hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars. An increase capital account J Z Prines Island Path by three hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars to pay Roselle Industries for completed date work on Prines Island Path Project along Prines Island waterfront as identified in the two thousand thirteen Redevelop Connection Plan for Prines Island. And in accordance with the winning bid identified in Project C G F twenty-four oh, or dash oh five Prines Island Path, Prines Island Connections to Downtown Project. Twenty-three is a resolution increasing one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in ARPA funding to be transferred to the Glen's Falls Urban Renewal Agency for the support of rehabilitation of tax-free foreclosure and residential properties in order to return them to the city's tax rolls. Twenty-four is a resolution to increase A zero zero nine 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 dash four zero eight nine ARPA by thirteen thousand five hundred dollars and transfer to the City Glen's Falls C D C to pay for audit services. Twenty-five is a resolution to increase revenue account A zero zero nine 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 dash four zero eight nine ARPA by twenty, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred, excuse me, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-five cents. An increase expense account A one one six eight five dash two zero three zero computer equipment by two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-five cents to purchase Sky Shield Solar Shield Security Camera Systems to be installed as needed in parks and A P D investigations, monitor traffic at the Glen's Falls and at the Glen's Falls watershed property. Twenty-six is a resolution to increase revenue account A zero zero nine 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 dash four zero eight nine ARPA by forty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-three cents. An increase expense account A one one six eight five two zero three zero computer equipment by forty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-three cents to purchase for Police Department trailer-mounted Mobile Traffic Enforcement A unit to aid traffic common. Twenty-seven is a resolution to increase revenue account line A zero zero nine 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 dash four zero eight nine ARPA by sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. An increase expense account A four five one four two dash twenty-four hundred equipment by sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight to purchase new dump body truck and spreader unit for the D P W. Twenty-eight is a resolution to increase revenue account line, account A zero zero nine 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 dash four zero eight nine ARPA by a hundred and forty-five thousand. An increase expense account A five six nine nine zero dash twenty-two hundred equipment by a hundred and forty-five thousand to purchase needed equipment for the Glen's Falls Market Center. Twenty-nine is a resolution authorizing community development annual payments in the amount of two thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents for C B B G reimbursement for the city portion of the Community Development Director's salary to pay for legal notice advertisement related to C B D G budget amendment proposal following changes by HUD in eligible areas where C B G funding may be allocated. To reimburse a local nonprofit for eligible food pantry expenses and to pay their continued regular backups of the community development computer that houses the program's financial records. Thirty is a resolution to decrease expense line A one one nine 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 dash nine thousand contingency by two thousand five hundred dollars. An increase expense line A two three five zero one dash four four zero two control of dogs by two thousand five hundred dollars to increase yearly administration fee by the city's contractor for control and boarding of stray dogs and allowing the city contract with them for two thousand twenty-five. Thirty-one is a resolution to approve an approachment permit eight, number eighty-six dash twenty-four for the Glen's Falls Ventures One L L C Glen's Falls Retroactive Approval as approved by Mayor Collins on November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. Thirty-two is a resolution to approve the outside dining permit number fifteen dash twenty-four for Clon, Clonum eleven South Street Glen's Falls for replacement of chairs and tables in front of the business for a period of December eleventh, two thousand twenty-four through May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, as shown in the approved layout and compliance for pro-act regulations. Thirty-three is a resolution approving the third and final installment for the health insurance stipend for two thousand twenty-four. Attached is a list of full-time union and non-union employees who elect not to enroll in the City Glen's Falls Health Insurance Program. The payments are defined in the C S E A P V A and I A F F contracts. Thirty-four is a resolution to improve, increase revenue code A zero zero nine 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 dash four zero eight nine ARPA by thirteen thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars. An increase expense account A one one six two zero four four two, dash four four two eight equipment by thirteen thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars to purchase new flooring for the Controller's Office. Thirty-five is a resolution to amend the City Glen's Falls County Council Resolution number four five four dash twenty-four, uh, two thousand twenty-four to clarify the maintenance and plumbing for the pathway to the driveway portion of Paper Street. Thirty-six is a resolution to increase revenue account code A zero zero nine 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 dash four zero eight nine ARPA by a hundred and eighty-five thousand. An increase expense account A two three four one zero dash two zero three zero motor vehicle equipment by a hundred and eighty-five thousand to purchase the new Medics Type Two Ford Transit eighteen two fifty all-wheel-drive twenty-four T W G fifteen ninety-six ambulance. Thirty-seven is a resolution to approve an easement in the National Grid allowing them to access property of fifty-one fifty-seven South Street owned by the City of Glen's Falls should access be necessary to effect your repairs or maintenance on adjacent properties at forty-five South Street and thirty-six Elm Street owned by Glen's Falls Ventures L L C. Thirty-eight is a resolution to approve the warrant. Do we have a motion for a roll call vote?
So does.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Lawrence Clark.
Yes.
Councilman Donahue.
Yes.
Councilman Landry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Palmer. Yes. And Councilman Laplin.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Old business. Councilman Clark.
Your old business.
Councilman Donahue.
Just that I appreciate all the hard work. Lucy Brothers did and Sidewalk and McDonald Street East Side. I have a lot that I have, I helped to get out of it. They've done great work in the city. I only got it on Flat Street, not Flat, but missed it.
McDonough.
McDonald Street, yeah. But the work is also all over the city.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Landry. Old business, no old business. Councilman Palmer.
Yes, I also wanted to mention Louisiana Brothers. I, I received, so Webster Avenue is in the third ward and there's obviously a huge project going on there. I received this from a resident on Webster and she asked me to share it. And she said, I don't know if there have been any public thank yous to Louisiana for the work they are doing across the city. They have done a great job on Webster and have been so accommodating to the residents on the street. It's not easy doing the level of work they are doing without disrupting the comings and goings of the people who live here. If you can, please extend a public thank you to the crew on Webster and I'm sure throughout the city for a job well done. And then I also received another comment from someone on Webster saying they've been extremely accommodating and polite. They even delayed digging in front of our house because of a family event. Five stars. And then another comment saying, we also had a positive experience with Louisiana Western. Our new sidewalk and curving look great. Minimal inconvenience. Good crew on a difficult task. So a lot of the time when people's streets are being worked on, we hear the complaints, but it's really nice. It seems like a universal feeling that a lot of people are appreciating the work they're doing. So I wanted to share that.
Thank you.
Also give our city engineer Jeremy Schneible and our D P W superintendent Tom Gerard a shout out too because when I have had people with complaints, they've been responsive and have gone out and mitigated those issues within a day. So I'm really grateful for that. I also wanted to take a moment to say something about Nina Mastriani. She was a constituent of mine who passed away in very recently from brain cancer. She was a longtime serving member on the Tree Commission. She was, did a number of things and is known for activism. She created an endowment for single mothers to go to school at SUNY Adirondack. But what I want to talk about is her dedication to trees. So she was a longtime Tree Commission member. She and I worked together on two different, writing two different grants for the purposes of dealing tree inventories, tree maintenance and tree planting. She just donated her time to do that. We hosted several Arbor Day celebrations together in the community garden by the fire department where we involved local students in planting new trees and giving out tree samplings. I don't know if it's possible to dedicate a tree or something like that to her in the city, but if I could donate a plaque or something, I'd love to do that because as, as recent as, you know, a week or two before she passed away, I was getting messages from her with ideas for more grants we should apply for for trees. So I just wanted to honor her service and, you know, we're lucky when, when residents give their time and input that way.
Wasn't she involved with the community garden as well?
She ran the community garden, yeah.
The one in, by Ryde, so.
It'd be a great place to put a tree.
Sure, a tree at that plant. We'd have to ask the property owners because I believe Ryde owns that. But absolutely, let me make sure I bring it up in the Tree Commission. I know we kept a spot open for her a couple of times. We thought she was gonna come and one of the members went to pick her up and she just wasn't feeling well enough. So I absolutely, certainly a tree, if not a forest, in her name, right? She is committed to so much in her community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Laplin.
Just, I was wondering if I could get a follow-up about the easement in the watershed area with Queensberry Lane Conservancy.
I met with the gentleman. We looked at the map. We agreed that you and I and he might take a hike in there as soon as the weather was good enough. I explained to him the other problems where, where it's going into and encouraging more people. He was able to actually point out to me where the illegal traffic is going now and how, how that would actually maybe by incorporating that suggestion, it might actually cut down on the people going around Butler Pond in another way. So it was a great meeting and we're definitely gonna move forward.
Okay, sounds great.
Thank you. Under new business, Councilman Clark.
I've done it.
Councilman Donahue.
About to work out.
Testing right now. New business, Councilman Landry.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to congratulate our new probationary firefighters who recently graduated from the New York State Fire Academy. Firefighter Joseph Sullivan, firefighter Josh Tuda, firefighter Michael Sims and firefighter Kyle Spiezio. Good luck in your careers as Glen's Falls professional firefighter and thank you for joining our ranks. I wish them all the success that we can give them. In that same vein, we are starting to get snow, so please shovel your sidewalks after snowstorms, especially with our kids. And we're a walking school district, so that's taken care of. Keep your neighborhood fire hydrants shoveled out so the fire department can find them if they need them. Great to see downtown is alive with the spirit of holidays last Friday with crowds of people enjoying a heavenly evening out. My thanks to many people and organizations who made that wonderful event happen. We have another new business opening in the second ward in downtown Glen's Falls. Tres Mios, which means Free Daughters, will open their new restaurant at twenty-one Bay Street. The fare will be Mexican and the spacious bar will provide a wide variety of drinks to its patron. They will also use this location to support their food truck business of the same name that has frequently been in many of our city outside events. Best of success to Mike and Jennifer Hernandez and welcome to downtown Glen's Falls. Lastly, Councilman Laplin, if you would. I know that they were talking about getting more cameras for the city that possibly won be considered for the Crookwell Preserve property that we have. We're, we're dealing with a fair amount of vandalism out that way and we're starting to invest some money into that. So if there's room, I realize I didn't bring it forward beforehand, we could use one out there.
There's a part of what we just passed with Solar Shield and I can't remember what the other one is, but there are mobile cameras, so there may, there probably is one that would be able to be dedicated over there at least for the time span of catching whoever the perpetrators might be.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Palmer, new business.
I have no new business.
Councilman Laplin.
No new business.
Thank you. With that, we'll go back to public comment. If anybody'd like to speak to the council, please come to the microphone. I do want to say that regarding, I know that Lieutenant Hall and his wife are with us. We are, Karen, do you know the language you do? Before I read the language to go into executive session and we'll make a motion to adjourn because we can't pass any resolution tonight. I, I wanted to, to read a brief statement so that everybody understands what the city, where we are with these conversations. First of all, I want to make sure that I say that I support Lieutenant Hall and his efforts. His brothers and sisters in Glen's Falls Fire Department are heroes answering calls for fire and life safety for more than four thousand times, four thousand calls a year. Doug is to be considered a hero and it would be like, I would like everyone to know that for the last ten weeks, he's being paid through his union members of their donation of sick time, which is due to run out on December fourteenth. I have consistently asked from union representatives for more than six months that they do, one, A, provide us a detailed plan for donating their time to Lieutenant Hall. B, specifically, they need to have, to show that their plan is legal from a Department of Labor point of view because they are suggesting not only that they donate their benefit time to Doug's retirement, but also wish to work that, those vacant hours created by Doug's absence and not be paid for that additional time they work. This makes them, in my eyes, even more heroic that they're offering to work to not only give Doug their personal time or their vacation time that would be approached to his union, but they're also offering to work those shifts and then not be paid for them. And I've asked now for over six months from their attorney that, that attorney's help said that's legal from a Department of Labor's point of view. I finally have asked that they, they showed, so they show that it's legal from a Department of Labor point of view. Also, we've asked for the details of the time that they plan to use so we can calculate the financial costs and the potential savings to the council so that we can consider the specific financial expenditures to be placed on the county city taxpayers. We have done our portion, which is no, we've calculated every penny that when Doug would, would go onto this, into this lead when he, he runs out of his sick time that his peers are donating. We've calculated how much time, how much money that would cost the city to do that. But we also need the, the amount of savings. So every firefighter, if they donate a day of vacation time and they're willing to work that time or not get paid, that we actually are saving money that we would have been paying somebody. I need to present to the council that exact savings and that savings depends on who donates the time. If a firefighter with thirty years is donating their time, we actually save more because that firefighter would have been paid more to work those hours. If a newer firefighter is to donate his time, then we'd be paid a little less. But there is a savings there and we need to know exactly what that savings is so that we can say, this is what it'll cost and this is what we'll save and this is the difference. Because that difference would need to be approved by the council and be something covered by the taxpayers that the council wishes to, to consider. And I know that they certainly do. I know that they, the council members that I've spoken to certainly appreciate Doug and his service and the, and the efforts placed by his peers, but it needs to be very specific numbers and we need to know that it's legal. but it needs to be very specific numbers and we need to know that it's legal. So I am gonna call an executive session tonight, so that, not to pass a resolution, because we don't have a clear legal plan or financial plan proposed for the council to consider, but I do want to make sure that the council knows all the details of everything that we've done and, and how, how many times we've met over the now a year and a half that this is, that this issue's been going on. I hope that the union will provide these answers to these questions, so that the council can consider them as soon as possible, and we, we remain ready and able to, to meet and talk about it. Um, so with that, um, they, instead of a motion to adjourn, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive sess- session pursuant to Public Officers Laws, Section one oh five, Section E and F, relative to the personnel issue, and request from the fire, a request from the firefighters, which may impact the collective bar- collective, collective bargaining agreement and for, to discuss the medical condition of a particular employee and his continued employment.
So.
Do you have a second? Thank you. And I believe when we, uh, come out, we, we do not have a resolution, so could I ask the same two council members to make a motion to come out of it, um, now, without a resolution passed, so we don't need to keep, um, our clerk here?
Silver. Second.
Thank you. Um, we, uh, we stand in executive session, thank you all, thank you very much.